Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, welcome, everybody, to this special meeting of the Westminster School Board on November 10th, 2022, at the Westminster Center School. We're convening at about 6:04. It's only a special meeting. It's our regular meeting of the month, but it's on an odd date, which is why it's being referred to as a special meeting. Yeah, we're all good. Thank you. So I'll call a meeting to order, and because we're thinking in terms of the public, Fact TV is here and folks are watching us who may not know who everyone is, we tend to open the meeting with introductions. And so I'll start over here.
I'm Marjorie, the Westminster Board member.
Hi, I'm Karen, manager of Westminster Board.
Liz Hardy, principal of Westminster Center School.
Tina Bieleci, Westminster Board.
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster Board.
Charles Hutchison, Vice Chair of the Westminster Board.
Ricky Adams, Technology.
Nicole.
And Nicole.
Take a minute.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, there are none. We'll go ahead. And I'll see if there are any communications and public comments tonight, except there may not be. All right. With that, actually, I'm seeing Jim Vasina, our finance guru and manager for the Windham Northeast, and thank you, Jim, for being here. We'll call on you in just a few minutes.
Sure.
So next item is to review and approve the board members' minutes for October 20th. I have a couple of corrections, but let me ask if anybody else does. All right. The first is a small one, but on the first page, under six reports, last sentence under Finance Update, the last sentence, "The kids that are outside of our district will be in the..." It's excess cost, E-X-C-E-S-S, rather than access. It's an unusual term, but Mr. Correct that. And then getting to the very end of the meeting, a motion was made by Charlie to enter into executive session, and then we didn't complete the minutes. It doesn't indicate that we came back out of executive session. And so I'm suggesting, and I'll send this, Nicole, to you in writing, but let me read it to the board as something to consider right now. Returning from the executive session, Cheryl Charles, the Chair, reported with regret that the request for out-of-district placement of a student at Westminster Community School is denied. The board will be considering a policy to guide decision-making about such requests. Such a policy is not currently in place. That would be my proposal. Amendment to the...
Yes.
All right, so with, I'm interking a motion to approve the minutes with those two corrections. Okay.
Aye. Aye, sorry.
All right, we're calling?
All right, sure, yes. I can informally call for it, but thank you for informally formally responding to that request. So thank you. The minutes are approved, and I think, Nicole, that's fine to do it just that way. So with that, then, very exciting. Let's hear the principals' report.
Sure, yeah. We're all buzzed about the harvest meal today, but I am going to bring us back to Monday, October 31st, when we held our second annual Farm and Field Day. And this is a day that was filled with activities outside, including a story walk, horse-drawn wagon rides, yoga, jewelry making, and sack races. We cooked pizza outside in pizza ovens, and community members parked a variety of vehicles in our parking lot for students to explore. This was held in the morning, and then in the afternoon, we had our Halloween parade, which we were able to welcome the Corinhatton Marching Band again this year, just the drum section, and it was really wonderful, wonderful day. Yeah, it's really nice.
I videoed it.
Oh, great, great. Today, we had our harvest meal. This is a tradition that we haven't had in our building for about three years due to COVID. We were able to welcome families into the school, had a meal together. There was bread, kale salad, butter, cheese, and either squash soup or corn chowder. Our fourth graders welcomed everyone with a song, and let me close the event with our school song, Finding Road. Our students and staff worked on Wednesday to chop vegetables, roll silverware, make table decorations, and set up the tables and chairs. The tradition is really special and a total team effort by the whole school, students and staff. And one of the most magical things about the event is that we use locally grown food, either within a very short distance from the school or directly from our school garden. And we ended the afternoon with an all-school hike through Evans Woods. And our after-school program is up and running, as you know. Our current clubs are cupcake decorating, arts and crafts weaving, art journaling, basketball, readers theater. We also started tutoring this week, and tutoring is held on Mondays and Wednesdays after school. And just to, I know Andy has been talking a lot about our work with FOCUS Schools. So just so the board is aware, we do have an instructional leadership team here at the school. Every school within the SU, WCS, has been working with FOCUS Schools, and we're beginning to, the phases of leading staff through a process to identify a targeted instructional focus that would identify one thing we want all students to know and be able to do. And it's really an exciting opportunity for us to use our data in deciding a common instructional goal throughout the school. That will be... Yeah, just to give you about the processes.
Yeah. And that is about it for today. Could you say a little bit more about the common instructional goals, please?
Yeah. So the hope is that we're going to be looking as a staff, looking at, well, deciding what we really, if we did this, if we got really good at this, it would make everything else better, right? So if we got really good at comprehension, or just for example, we haven't decided what our instructional goal was, it is going to impact positively so many other aspects of our educational day. So we're going to be looking at our data and looking at where some deficits are and what we want to target. And then, as a staff, we'll decide what that one thing is, and we will think about a specific strategy that we want to see in all classrooms. You know, that could be, would be one example.
Critical thinking.
Right, like, or even like, we could say, okay, we want to do critical thinking, but we want to focus, use writing to focus on critical thinking. So we're going to be talking about evidence-based, using evidence in our writing, justification, and focus on that aspect so that kids are always explaining their thinking, and then they're explaining their thinking in all content areas. And that's only going to make everything better, not just your writing, but you're going to be explaining your thinking enough, and you're going to explain your thinking when you're drawing an art piece, like, why did you do that? You know, so that is the process, and we're not really sure what our targeted focus will be at this point, but we are in the beginning stages.
Any other questions? Yeah, so is thinking the only aspect that you're going to be looking at in terms of the whole child? I mean, I'm thinking, you know, that when you ask about art, for example, so, you know, kind of what the motivation was, or what does it, what does it say to you? Or, you know, so I'm, when I hear thinking, I see, hear it differently than a more rounded approach, and I know you, so I know that there's going to be a rounded approach, but I wanted to ask that. So is it based on thinking or feelings as well?
Well, it'll really be based off of data. So it has to be measurable by data. So that's tricky, because I know our staff will want to say, you know, curiosity, or kindness, or empathy, right? Really difficult. We don't have an assessment right now that assesses empathy.
Yeah.
But we are phrasing it in a way, we'll lead our staff through this. I don't have the words off the tip of my tongue, but those are kind of like prerequisite, like, yeah, we're going to be taking care of kids, and we're going to be focusing on kindness and all of those social skills, and we're going to focus on this instructional piece, too, that's connected to data. But if you're thinking about art and you want it, like, communication is your goal, like, that's a standard, and how can we work on communication if you're explaining your feelings or even your thinking, it doesn't really matter, but you're working on articulating that.
Yeah, I mean, there are approaches that are very result-oriented on empathy, for example.
Yeah.
So I'm, you know, just some ideas, and yeah, asking about some.
Definitely.
Thank you. So another question, then, talking about the evidence and the data. Where are you? Do you have recent test results? Bring us up to date on that.
So we have been working, we, the SU is using Panorama, so that's connected with our behavioral data through Swiss, our math testing and our attendance. Those are the three pieces that are already in there. But classrooms have other data that they use for their instructional planning, including our reading assessments, running records, a primary number and operation assessment that is done in K-2, our biological awareness profile that is done in K-2 as well. So we have data sheets that we use in grade levels that we talk about, and so we'll be looking at that data.
And one of the things that we talked about with ESRS support is creating for you all as administrators and teachers and parents, I suppose as well, but a more comprehensive database. So is that underway, and are you able to access it?
I think we're still in the beginning stages of that, because much of the assessment that's done in the primary level is, I don't know for sure, but I haven't seen it be connected to Panorama yet. So our question is, how do we house and where do we house all the other assessments that we're doing? And we just talked about this yesterday with FOCUS Schools, too, developing an assessment plan for the, that's you, so we're not over-assessing, or, you know, our upper grades feel like they're under-assessing, right? And our primary grades feel like you're over, like, are duplicating, and you don't want either of those, but you want a clear plan for the year, so we know what and when and how we are assessing students and students.
And is there a plan, so like, when I, I have slight aversion to the running records, because they're not necessarily research, there's not a strong research base to defend the use of them or show that students make progress, or is there, is that part of it, too, is looking at what data systems you have and which ones you might say, we don't necessarily need this system anymore, and this might be a better precaution?
Right, yes. And making sure we're getting the information that we need. Yeah, and we're using tools that are giving us the information we need. Yeah.
Well, thank you for all of that, and keep this, continue to keep this posted. Did you have any questions, Cheryl?
No, thank you.
I did, I was talking to Deb the other day. There is a system, we've started using down in our district that can house, like, you can build any data system you want into it, which is nice, because you can put literally any assessment in there, and a lot of them are already in there.
What is that called?
It's called Forefront, so it has a grade. Yeah. It has, it has really good math screeners, which are short and quick, and the PNOA can be, it's already built in there and stuff, but it can also, you can put, like, works their way assessments and that kind of stuff all in there, and so you can get a clear view of, like, all of the kids' data.
Right.
Sounds like what we've developed.
Yeah.
All right, so Cheryl and then Marjorie.
I'm thinking, I think the intention is great to find that thing that's going to unlock all the other doors. Like the notice, you won't find that one thing that will unlock all the doors. So I'm sticking with science practices. There are about eight sort of skills or mental habits that the science community uses to try and, to develop in children from chaos, so they gradually become more, and more like scientific thinkers. So I'm wanting, while I'm trying to look at the key, really, you don't have to find the V1, the A1 this year, maybe not by next year, or by next year. So I just, we're just cautioning not to beat yourselves on the head to find the relevant key. Just something that makes sense.
Yeah.
And say, let's just infuse this for this year, and then talk about it, and then try another one.
Yeah, and the way FOCUS Schools explained that, too, because that was my thinking at first, oh, do you pick, like, one thing this year and then next year? And their explanation was, you pick one thing, one big umbrella, right? You want it to be broad so that everyone is able to access it, right? It doesn't have to be just during your math block or just during your science block. It's so broad that any class, any grade, anytime could be teaching this, but you might change the strategy you're using. So it might be comprehension, and you might do, like, a specific comprehension strategy, and then you might shift it a little bit, but it'll still be under the umbrella of comprehension. And I think it also has to be one that our whole staff is invested in, in that they see the value in this thing, this one thing. So I'll let you know when we get there.
Oh, the other question I have is, like, with the assessments, is that, are most of those assessments for your own, for like, for your own information, or what are the ones that are, like, sent to the state?
Yeah, well, S-Back, which we're not doing anymore.
Where, oh, so that's gone.
That, the state is discontinued. There'll be a new one, I'm not sure.
They'll still make your...
Yeah, and that's the one that's to the state, and that was after third grade. Okay. It doesn't start till third grade. Most, especially in kindergarten level, are for teachers' use. Yeah. For instructional things.
Just in late, didn't you? Did you assume?
We didn't. That's another one that is...
It's fourth and eighth.
Yeah. I think we got chosen for an eighth this year. Yeah.
What did you just say about primary grades here? Something, what are the required tests there?
Math, we do. Okay. We didn't do math in kindergarten in the fall. We'll do it in the winter. We just thought that was not appropriate. They do a primary numbers and operation, and it's not necessarily required, it's what our staff is saying.
It's helpful, too.
It's helpful, yeah.
It's a really good assessment.
Yeah. Right, but it doesn't go to the state, it's not the state thing, but it's a school.
Yeah.
Kindergarten does speech screeners and occupation, OT, screeners in kindergarten, and then we do biological awareness profile.
Thanks, thank you. Looking to the next agenda item, you can continue, because it's really an update on parent and community involvement, and we've gotten quite a bit of outreach going on. Just to update to us if there's anything new in terms of numbers of volunteers.
Yeah, we have about seven community volunteers for all aspects. Some people who have volunteered at Studio Y, some people who are putting their names in to be winter sports volunteers, and quite a few classroom readers.
Great.
Yeah. That's great. And so I just had somebody reach out today, so people are still reaching out, and I just connect them with a classroom.
And the most recent article that you two wrote that was in the Westminster Gazette included this request and encouragement, and it was front page.
I know, and that's this person who called today, said, I read your article in the Gazette. Yeah.
Well, to everybody, you know, we encourage you to reach out to Liz if there are no ways you'd like to temologist.
That's great, thank you.
And similarly, an old subject, the possible capital improvements. You don't have probably the October 31 report where the facility assessment was done? I don't. No, I don't have any info about that. This is all just a heads up, as we look ahead, December 1, will be our board meeting, will be focused completely on budget and kind of related items. And so if there are needs for possible capital improvements that are not covered by ESRS, by those federal monies that may be possibly eligible for that, if there are things that you think we should be looking at, either in the budget or proposed use of the surplus monies that we have from '21 and '22, those are, we don't have the number from fiscal year '22 yet. We do have the figure around a million dollars from fiscal year '21, and all of that has to go in the form of a proposal to the voters at town meeting coming up. So it's just to have us really be prepared for that, and that's why I keep asking, you know.
Yeah, no, I'm glad it's still on the agenda, and I think the audit, the facilities audit would be a great use, a great way to use the data to make those decisions.
Correct. Okay. And then another old topic, but I think to update everybody, we spent some time at the last board meeting talking about the proposed Windham Northeast Early Learning Center and offices. Several of us were at the most recent SU board meeting, and I'll quickly summarize, and then I'll invite those of you who were there to maybe add in any comments if you choose to do so. But basically, an independent study was conducted to look at the feasibility of creating an early learning center, which would be from birth through preschool for the SU, and to look at a business plan around that possibility as well. The result of that analysis, done again by this independent film, was that there is a real need, there's a documented need in our supervisory union and nearby towns and villages to serve the early learning community. From a business perspective, that is, from a, is it feasible financially? Financially, not clear that it is. In fact, it appears not to be feasible. When analyzing all the numbers, it looked like it'd be prohibitive for too many families to pay what is needed to provide for that birth-through preschool approach, as was at least conceived for a new early learning center and supervisory union offices here. With all of that, then, the result of that meeting at the supervisory union level was to say, well, let's not give up here, but let's focus on preschool. Let's focus to see what we can do potentially to expand at least that beyond the 10 hours a week that's funded by the state. So that's the next phase, and there will be meetings to focus on that, to try to brainstorm with it, try to come up with some ideas. And some people believe that beginning with preschool is within the purview of the supervisory union, perhaps more so than trying to fill a gap around birth through toddler years. Anyway, that's the current status, still more study to be done, but I welcome any comments from others of you who were at that meeting and have read those materials.
I read the materials. I think it makes sense that the focus starts with pre-K, given that it just didn't look like it was feasible in terms of the financial situation. I do wonder if it would be, right now, I know that it, it's like a, it seems like it's a separate, there's not a connection between, there's a connection between the school and the preschool, but not, like, there's a...
No.
Yeah. It's a different program, right? And so I wonder if that would continue to look like that, or if it would be, the pre-K would start to be part of, more part of the schools if we expanded the pre-K to full day? And also just thinking about, right now, there's often children from Crafton and Saxon River who come because they don't have preschools there. And so if it were to expand to full-time, I'd assume it would be more Westminster parents would probably choose this as an option because it was full-time, and just what that would mean for kids in Crafton and Saxon River, if they then, how they could then also have the opportunity to have preschool as well.
You know, I was, what shall I say? Sorry, that, that was the conclusion, frankly, just because there's such a great need for parents of young ones, young before preschool. So at any rate, it, you know, the data came through the way it did, and that's what we had to go by. So the idea of making, figuring out what, you know, Tom is talking about, or Dean was talking about here, which is about, you know, the preschool being integrated into, you know, a school system, if it's possible, and looking at the finances and what that means. Everything we're hearing about school readiness in the younger communities suggests, you know, possibly exacerbated by COVID, highly likely exacerbated by COVID with so much isolation for so many children for a couple of years. You know, I just feel that it's an urgent need to try to figure out how to do this effectively. And if we're going to be focused on the, on the pre-K, the pre-kindergarten, already we have precedent in the supervisory union, we're already helping to provide some services that makes sense, to try to see what we can do to provide high-quality early learning for more children that are currently being served. So for the public, you know, there's still more to research going on, this isn't figured out yet. Yes?
I wasn't at the meeting, but I did read the reports, and I think, I think there's some cautions about those kind of reports, because, once I don't think the researches, there are clear enough distinctions between need and demand. Clearly, we identify a need on a societal level, but the mind is about who's going to pay. So the second thing is, it was sort of stated as a given that it had to be a five-star program. So that's clearly going to price you, price you up. So I don't, the perfect is the enemy of the good sometimes, so I'm not sure what fate was around that, went on around that. It's a, it's a room for a three-star program, or four and a half, or whatever. But that thing was, that was very interesting, that actually, the report said it is feasible. It was Andy's, it was in Andy's PowerPoint that he said it's not feasible. I wanted to know, how did we get from that to that?
Yeah.
Who made that, who reanalyzed the report and said, did he actually say, they say it's feasible, but I don't agree, because they said it was feasible? I disagree with them. I think it's not feasible, but it's interesting that somebody who was in that company...
I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure if that was a typo, given everything else.
Well, it could have been the word "not" was mishaps.
Exactly.
So I asked him, was the word "not" mishaps? But they said very clearly, it is feasible. But anyway, I think it's a five-star program, they're probably right, it's not feasible, but what about other levels? How many five-star programs are there in the month, anyway? I mean, really, we have to be that complotely. Then, what was I going to say? So then, so, so I agree, if, if the consensus at the time was, well, then, we'll throw the baby, most of the baby out and just go stick with preschool. How was that consensus survived at, as opposed to reexamining the original report and saying, well, okay, so we can't have everything we want, but there's something we can do?
I do, I also, I was, I, as like a business owner, I was chafing a little bit at that, at the report, because I was like, feasible or not feasible, like, anything is feasible. You just have to manipulate the variables until it, until it works. Like, I run a business, I know how to do this. It's like, like you said, like, three-star, four-star, how many kids pay, how many kids don't, where is it? What, you know, there are thousands of variables to manipulate. So to say, just blanket, no, not feasible, I was like, eh, it's feasible, I could, I could make it feasible for you. But, you know, it's, I think the biggest question in the meeting was, should the school district be looking at zero years old for pre-K? Like, and somebody did bring up that point strongly. We shouldn't even be looking at this. Like, this is too young, this is not part of what K through 12, like, this is not what's part of what we, what we do in the school district. We don't do younger kids, so like, I don't even know why we're talking about this. So that was said, I did not say that. So I, and I get that point, like, I can understand where people were coming from there. Yeah, but I do think that there's definitely room for manipulating the variables, for sure, but, but also, maybe it does make sense to do just only the pre-K, because that's being done.
Well, I think that there are these kinds of questions, I mean, not having been there, Charlie, so, you know, is to have an opportunity to talk, you know, with Andy again about, you know what I mean? Because these didn't come up quite this way at that meeting. That's all I'm wanting to say, that what really wasn't. And there were some clear steps to the fact that it was not feasible to do this because of a number of variables, right? So even though there were those that were there, you know, wished it was different. So I just feel like if there are some questions, I, you know, that it would be worth having a conversation again, but that's all I'm saying, because they didn't come up at that. Your comment about, you know, that it was inconsistent doesn't jive with what I read, but, you know, that's all I wanted to say. If maybe we, you know, have a more of a conversation again to sort of put it to rest in whatever ways is appropriate. I think it's not over. I think what's happened now is that it's a refocus for now on the pre-K, with us not losing any of this information. And I personally think the larger question is, is still appropriate, because the underlying foundation for all children's health, well-being, and academic success begins in those earliest years. So that was one person's voice that night. There was not a robust debate about whether or not it's in the purview of the supervisory union to do that. It was just, it was a comment, no resolution was made on that. But anyway, going forward, there is this group convening to keep working on it, just with a slightly more limited scope for now.
Can you go to the meetings? Because I can't go to those meetings. Okay. Can I see what you're doing? No, the, the early learning meetings, they're making them in the... And then I did spoke with, I did speak with Jennifer.
Uh huh. The principal of early learning.
Yes. I do find it strange that it's not in the school districts. Like, I mean, when I was trying to get online and like, find, you can't find the information online.
And I think it's because of the way it's funded, right?
She said, Jennifer said.
So, because that would be a structural change, if it ended up being full-time preschool within the schools, that, then, part of the...
that then part of the cost would be, the new cost would be part of the, go into the budget, and it would be based by the Westminster taxpayers. And the question is, would we not be tuitioning out pre-K? Would we not budget for pre-K tuition? Like, right now, we budget for pre-K tuition for people who want to go to any pre-K, 10 hours a week. So would we, so would that change because we offer a pre-K?
Offer it, and then you'd have to hire all the teachers for it, no matter how many kids there would be.
True. Whereas like, they'd have it right. Right, maybe you do both then.
Yeah.
So to be continued, sorry. Right, okay, anything else right now on it? Okay, thank you very much. And then the next topic under Old Business is the 2024 budget development and 21, 22 surplus, which I commented on. Jim, I did hand out the document Nicole has sent us, the PDF of this document electronically, and then she gave it to me to hand to all the board members tonight. You know, we have our special meeting on December 1, where we're really focused on the budget. So we're not going to, at least in my view, spend time on this tonight. But I'd certainly invite you, this is, Jim, Visina, to make any comments about this that you'd like to, because this is the second version, and I don't know whether you and Liz have yet met to talk it through.
We haven't.
Okay. So I'd certainly ask, if the two of you can meet between now and December 1, to get into that. I've got a couple of comments, but Jim, did you want to make any comments about it? We welcome that if you'd like to do so.
Just quickly, I just want to make one comment if I can. Won't take a lot of time, but if you can go on page 4, and I'm looking at line 913.
Okay.
And I just want to mention, there are a number of anomalies that I'm going to just point out to you. Under the last year's fiscal year operation, you'll see a number of 17,984. You'll see this year, 22,395. You'll see the live data as 3851. And I just want to tell you, I have not been able to go back and find out what the actual 17,984 represents. But I, there's certainly something wrong in those calculations. Now, I don't know if the 17,984 had some federal people in it, but I will look, try to look at it at some point in time. But I can say that, and it's very hard to go back to see how past budgets were constructed. But I can tell you, the data that is under the 24 is live data that has a tie-in to an actual person. And I, I, I'm just not sure how, if somebody said, gee, what happened back in last year where you had 18,000 and now you're only spending 4? And I don't know that I have an answer. So I just wanted to point that out.
Is this one specific individual?
No, this is, this would be the teachers, all of the teachers under the 1,100, regular or general ed teachers.
Their insurance.
Jim, it's interesting you pointed to that line, but there's actually a whole lot of those similar examples.
Yes, yes, there are. And I, I just point that out because it was one of the larger ones, Charlie.
Yes. But you have confidence in the numbers for the 23 budget, do you? They are real numbers, are they?
I have confidence in the numbers for the 24 budget.
Oh, we are, wait a minute, what are we doing here? Oh, I see, thanks, but, yes.
22, 23, and 24.
Oh, so we're actually going to the 24 budget right now. I'm starting to compute, yeah.
Right, just because this is the school year 22, 23.
Yeah, that's good, wow. That is weird, but so we, so these 22 and 23 numbers are some kind of.
Well, I. So I would ask everybody to read this, you know, and be prepared for the, for the meeting on December 1. One of the things that I find really helpful that you've been doing recently in these reports, Jim, is that you've got the, all right, well, just looking at page 1, budget expenditures, school district salaries. What you're doing is putting the backup so that you can see the detail that forms those numbers. And then you get to the next section, which would be down to, should be insurance and benefits. In every case, you put the detail behind it so you can read through and see what's making or taking, creating those numbers in total. So that's really helpful. Toward the back, there's some, it's all quite detailed. But it shows, it shows the bond that we're finally going to be done paying off at 95,000 a year plus interest in 2026.
What page is that from?
That is on page 38. So we're almost done with that long-term bond, which was the gymnasium, by the way. Then it's got all the personnel that are Westminster employees. Please know that we have a great many people in the building who are Supervisor Union employees. So one of the things that's going on right now is the Finance Committee for the Supervisor Union, and I do sit on that, has been working with Jim and is very close to having a Supervisory Union budget. Then what happens with that is that each of our school districts is assessed proportionately, and then that is built in to this budget. So we have the Westminster members, and then we get a percentage of what's applicable to us as Westminster gets built in.
Good, speaking of that, those numbers are not yet in yet? That were like.
They are. When you get to the very end, it's like page 45, Jim has begun to estimate.
Oh, estimate, right.
What are, you know, so we go from, you know, a 4-point something, yeah, 4.8 million budget to a 5.4 million, based on the additional.
But those numbers have yet to be filmed at the.
They're not finalized, but they're real close. I actually think that that's going to be proposed at the issue meeting next week. And then another, another thing that's interesting and important is on page 42, and it's the number of students and the number of students that we, Athens, Grafton, and Westminster, pay tuition for, where they go to, because we do not offer seventh and eighth grade. Page 42, we don't offer seventh and eighth grade in Westminster. And so our students either go to the visiting school in Bellas Falls, or they have the option to go to other nearby schools. And we, the taxpayers, pay tuition for them to do that. So you want to keep track of what those numbers are as well. So anyway, Jim, you're making huge progress in all of this. Thank you.
Okay.
And we have a lot of questions, I'm sure, because it's, you know, it's an important process.
Sure, absolutely. Okay.
So with that, I, unless, I don't think you need to stay, the rest of the items we're going to be discussing, but I don't think we're going to be taking any action on them. And of those, pardon?
Oh, I have a little question on this.
Oh, please do, I won't move on. I was just about to say that Jim could leave it at a certain point here if he chose to.
Yeah, I was just clearing my throat, actually.
Any more questions, though, on the 2024 budget development and our surplus questions?
On that page you were just talking about, do we pay for ninth grade?
No, that's the high school.
It does say ninth grade that we pay for nine students.
Nine, 10, 11, 12, 14 students.
Two degree none, oh, that's one is Grafton, though. So, but there are three Hilltop and nine Compasses here.
Yeah, Jim, this is page 42. I've not seen that before. I don't, that's not in the Westminster budget that I've seen, ever seen. So I don't know what those, what that means.
I think there were nine students, and I, Compass did not give me the breakdown for what grade level they were at. And so, so I just put the nine, I parked them under the ninth grade, but they're probably spread throughout.
They would only be seventh and eighth grade.
What's that?
Would only be seventh and eighth grade if we're paying for them.
And same with Hilltop. I don't actually think Hilltop goes to ninth grade.
Right.
Only go through eighth.
So you're saying you actually just plugged it in there? I think we're saying that that's, something needs to be investigated and corrected there.
We'll do that. Okay, thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks, everybody, yep.
I have a, I might have a question for Jim on the question of the students coming in from outside the district.
Sure.
So I know we're not on that for Jennifer yet, but.
We have a policy to that.
We have a policy which we're going to discuss. I don't want to keep them, probably. Would it be comfortable to ask Jim a question anyway, a general question?
Oh, go ahead, while he's still here.
Jim, so we're going to discuss the policy of students coming into Westminster Prominent Districts and how we pay for that, and whether we want to do it or not. My question is, at the marginal level, if Westminster's enrollment goes up by one student, do we receive extra funds from the state or not?
I will say this, I certainly, and this is my opinion, but the state is changing many of the way they used to do a lot of their funding. And I will say that I certainly wouldn't count on additional state funding for additional students that you may bring in.
Okay, then the opposite side of that question. If a student chooses to leave Westminster and go to another district, can the other district claim that student from the state and get money from the state? Well, that's a big one. Do we, sorry, we've already answered that question. If a student goes out of the district, do we, could we lose money from the state? Could we, Westminster, lose money?
Many of this, I mean, the students that go into different schools do it based on school choice. And usually those are, and again, I think there was some misunderstanding because some people thought if somebody chose to attend a high school on school choice, that they were compensated for that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
I don't think they are. I don't.
For elementary kids, if an elementary student chooses to leave our district, is there any penalty against us for the state, from the state?
In the formulas that are kind of connected with the taxation, the Vermont tax, you do have a, a line which is equalized pupils. And the equalized pupils are pupils that live in your district. And so if you're losing some of those students to go out, I would say it certainly could have a negative effect. Because the more that equalized pupils goes down, I think it shifts some of the tax burden.
Thank you.
But if students come in, they don't count towards our equalized pupils either.
Not unless they're residing within your boundaries.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that's going to help involve the conversation about the policy. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Anything else, Jim, or are you ready to sign off?
I'm going to sign off.
We so appreciate, thank you, see you soon.
All right, take care.
So New Business for discussion, are there any other questions? I'm sorry, okay, thank you. So New Business, a discussion of the reading program specific to Westminster. I think this is an item team that you had suggested we discuss.
Yeah, I know that there's, we start, we talked at the beginning of the year about the, there's, the district is starting to work with the Stern Center, and I was just wondering, I was wondering on an update on that and what that looks like and how it might affect the way in which some reading is instructed and intervention and that kind of.
Yeah.
Sure.
So last year, so they were working with the Stern Center with a program called Lead to Read, and special educators are taking, I think, I believe it's a two-year program, if I'm wrong on that, but they took the first year last year, and the second year is this year. This year, our Title I teachers are taking Lead to Read this year, first year. And then the hope is that we can open it up to classroom teachers. So that has changed our intervention because, as you know, it used to be LLI, like, only LLI. So Level Literacy Intervention, which is basically very similar to the classroom instruction. So it's saying a student needs more, and then, for some students, it's beneficial, but not all. And many students who need an intervention in the classroom, like, they're not making any gains if we're expecting in the classroom, and they need more, and they might need different. So now, with our new learning and the way the SU is shifting, intervention is able to provide different instruction to students who, like, for example, if they're needing extra support with phonemic awareness, they would get that type of intervention that is not as strong in the classroom in an intervention session. And I think the SU is also shifting, you know, a few years ago, we adopted the Founders in Penile Classroom, and so now.
The what classroom?
Founders in Penile Classroom, which is a balanced literacy approach. And so I think with Deb Cardigan's leadership, we're able to look at Founders in Penile Classroom as not necessarily a program, but as a structure, and having some autonomy to work within that structure to meet student needs. So for example, the structure, one structure that's beneficial to all students is small group instruction, right? But with Founders in Penile Classroom, that always needs guided reading. So that's giving some autonomy to the teacher, and with the new learning for Lead to Read, to address student need within small groups, you know. And part of Founders in Penile Classroom is interact or read aloud. That's just a great strategy, and it's going to be beneficial to the classroom and to think about, yeah, we have these wonderful book sets in Founders in Penile Classroom to guide the interactive read-alouds, but also to have the autonomy to bring in an interactive read-aloud that might connect with their social studies or science reading. So we're just making some small shifts to try to work with us.
So tying that back to our team, Jim, what was the name of the program you talked about? Or what was the topic? I forgot in the beginning of this conversation, sorry.
Lead to Read.
Lead to Read.
The Stern Center.
That's something that's happening now that the.
So we started with special education, special educators, and then it's Title I teachers, and then next year, the goal is to open up to classroom teachers.
And then the other, I'm not mean to, but you'll respond. My question is too about the, because there's a lot of training when Lynn Carey was here around the three-cuing system, and I'm wondering if that worked, if we are working to dismantle that system?
Would you explain the three-cuing system to me?
Yes. The three-cuing system, how much background do you want on the three-cuing system?
Just three Qs, just.
There's a, there's.
Q is two, one, Q, two, Q, three, four.
Yeah, so it's thinking about the way in which you approach reading, so the way reading is taught. So it's like you don't, you think about, instead of reading the word, like, with using your phonics, you think about what word would make sense, look at the picture, that stuff, which is proven with brain research to actually be a very core reading strategy. But it is one that our previous Assistant Superintendent pushed very hard. And so there was a lot of training on it a couple of years ago, and it's, research shows that it actually creates huge problems in reading and creates poorer readers than stronger readers. And so I know that some of that, I'm just wondering on what that work looks like in saying, like, we're no longer saying, look at the picture to figure out the word. It's like, look at the letters to figure out the word.
No contextual.
Yeah, don't use contextual.
Yeah, I'm more lucky that we have Deb Cardigan, who's working closely with teachers, to have made that shift.
Okay.
So what you're saying is that that. So what you're saying is that that, so that is not a literacy, in other words, it doesn't work with people who are non-literate, what you just described.
It doesn't work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's the thing that doesn't work called?
It's, um.
She said three Qs.
The thing is, I mean, it's, it's based in like a whole language approach, but it's called the, the specific trainings that were brought were around the three cuing system.
So trying to put this maybe in a little bit larger perspective than, and help is appreciated a little bit. You're saying now that Founders in Penile, which is a reading approach that, that began out in Athens and Grafton and spread in, in with a lot of advocacy from the superintendent's office at that point in time, that now that we're three years into it, we're looking at the positive structural elements, but still providing more autonomy for people to, based on evidence, we're moving yet again toward a more evidence-based approach to what works to teach reading. That's what I'm hoping I'm hearing here.
Yeah, and it's looking at that, that system was weaker in the phonics instruction.
Right.
And so it's supplementing and knowing that not, um, it's just knowing where the deficits were in the system and supporting where the deficits were. And also just building teacher capacity in knowing what quality literacy instruction will look like and looking at the structures, like this is a structure that's going, that's going to be beneficial to all learners, but having some flexibility within that structure to not have to ignore them.
And the three cuing system is separate from Founders in Penile, is it?
No, it's very, very, very connected.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I don't, I actually didn't know that. Yeah. I actually didn't know that.
Do people like the, the Found, Foundism, you know?
There are aspects of it that are great, you know.
Their active read-aloud is great. The books, the books are really good.
And on different grade levels, right? So if you're in your older grade and they are reading, right? So they're reading continual texts, the books are engaging, um, but then again, the word work is lacking. And so we're just settling that.
One of the issues is like the word work isn't necessarily connected with the text that they're reading. So they don't, they don't read decodable texts in the younger grades. They read books that are, have book words and patterns that they haven't learned and so they have to guess in order to read those books. And so.
Right. I'm, I think this is a really important discussion and I appreciate everybody's help with it. There's a, there's a tension here in that overall curriculum per se is said to be the responsibility of the supervisory union. At the same time, the law allows for individuality at the district level and at the building level. And so we need to just kind of look at all of those dynamics here. And so I think it's quite healthy that the question was brought up here, that we can discuss it. And I think it may end up also being a topic at the supervisory union.
I just also wanted to mention the thought that, you know, a quick tool of our good program or any program is a good program in the hands of a teacher. And so it's building the skill level of our teachers to recognize and to shift their instruction based on their student need. So I don't know, we can't like hang our hats on any program really unless we have goals. This is the level of our educators.
Which is a multi, it's a multi-year process. It's not a short process. It's a long process, but it sounds like it's going, like.
It's in a positive direction, I was wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on that right now?
Well, I actually should have said this during your principal report, but I'm also just totally impressed with schools in general and this school because it's like, you guys are doing all this extra stuff and then you're also teaching these kids.
I know.
Like day to day, just the day-to-day slog getting through it, plus all the extras. I'm totally impressed.
And the kids come home like very happy every day.
Yeah, they're like doing fun things. They're learning. I mean, Junie's reading.
Yeah.
It's, I'm like, whoa, she's learning. Yeah, it's, it's impressive.
And just a quick anecdotal story about that because our K one students made a variety of breads for the feast today. And just, instead of just like taking their dessert and going, you know, the teachers are, we are going to try all the breads and then.
Isn't describing where it's like always a teaching moment.
Yeah.
That's great.
And they get to go to Studio Winder's.
Oh, yeah. That's great. Well, let's dive into the complex topic of out-of-district attendance policy. And I know that Margie and Charlie have both worked on it. You've got a, and they've brought it to us for consideration tonight. So you've got a draft policy here and do you guys want to kind of walk us through what you're proposing for consideration here?
Well, Margie did the, uh, chair, but so you just start.
Okay. Um, I just used the, um, V S B A, Vermont State, Vermont State School Board Association, that's what it is. And that was sent to us by Sean, the lawyer. So I just used that as a uh, guide and changed a few things. I thought that that, I mean, yeah, so basically what I'm saying is that, or what we decided to go forth here is that, um, basically we will admit people when space is available. We're not going to discriminate based on anything. Yeah. One of the main things we were concerned about was tuition and that basically what we're saying is number one is that we will write, we will create a tuition rate. That's based on the, um, the state numbers, but that, I mean, I, I, I I don't know what I'm saying here. That we're going to make a, we're going to make, I mean, you guys can read it. We're going to make a tuition rate for non-resident people.
Would it be different than the per price per people that's in the budget already?
Typically not.
I don't think so.
We have to establish one every year and that's typically the idea.
So that's not, it's not, this is not a brand new thing?
No.
Okay.
Although, um, you know, that, that conversation that we were having with you last time about, um, special ed being an extra, what did they call it? The, what was the wording?
Excess cost?
An excess cost, like I thought that this might leave us room to tack something on actually if we need to. I don't know. I don't know if it does.
Thanks, Margie. I would say that with first glance through this, you might be appalled. We sound like wall builders.
Wait, you're saying we do?
So that was a bit shocking to me to realize that basically I ended up thinking this shouldn't be easy for people to do this. And I think it all revolves around this question of the tuition, which is why I was, I'm running Jim a little bit. Because there's two, two issues. One is, does tuition travel from one school district to another? And then is there any penalty at the state level? If the other district loses a student, are they going to be miffed at us because they've lost some state revenue? Um, are we going to get any extra state revenue and so on? And I thought, well, let's look at it the other way around. If a fourth grade student came to us and said, I want to move to Grafton. Uh, will you pay my tuition to go to Grafton? We probably would say no, because we don't want to chip, I don't, I don't think our voters would agree to have an open door to say, well, anybody who wants to move to somewhere else, to go to somewhere else because their uncle lives there, we'll pay for them. And Rockingham has already made very clear that they're not going to pay for anybody to come here.
Have they? I was curious about that.
Well, I mean, a number of board members have, so I think that means it's next.
Okay, so they're just saying no.
So the question is, I think basically the idea is dead in the water if tuition is involved, I think. But I, it's going to be very rare that a school district says, yes, out of the goodness of our heart, we will pay for Sally to go to somewhere else because we just wish for the best. It's going to be a very rare occasion. So we can't count the, the obvious exception, which was people who work in this building. Uh, and if somebody works in our building, we'll say, sure, bring your kids.
Yeah.
Uh, but at this point, hang on a second, Karen, at this point, we haven't carved out any other exceptions. And that's where I'd like to throw it open. If, 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 if people's hearts are broken by the fact that this does look like a wall, then what other exceptions would you like to put in there?
Like a wall or a war? What's the word?
Wall.
Wall, thank you.
But I think it's sort of imposed on us by the fact that nobody's going to want to pay us to have their students come here. And we wouldn't either.
And, and the sending school is required to meet the needs. Is that right? Like, like if the kid has a bunch of need, you know, special ed needs, that school is required to hire the people to fill that need.
By law.
By law. So like, it's not like they can really say, oh, that need is going to be filled here and not at this other school, right?
No.
So I, I guess I'm confused as to when people would really. Yeah.
The other thing is that if, if we were to open the door, I think, I, that wasn't my thought, but I think I agree that there could easily be a drift from quote unquote, big or popular schools to two, from small schools to big schools.
Yeah.
It could further drain the, the F and Grafton, the little schools. Because Westminster has this great reputation. Let's all get our kids to go to Westminster. How do we ever decide that? I said to Margie, let's not even try to decide this on merit.
Right.
Let's not even go there.
We don't want to.
Too much of a thorn bash. Uh, let's just leave it to the market and say, how would we pay for this? What would be the market forces here and what exceptions do we want to make?
Yeah, Karen, yes. So when a school does pay for sixth graders to go to other schools or they're, to go to seventh grade, right?
Seventh and eighth grade.
Yeah, that's right. So Westminster, this school does pay for them to go to another school. So I find that interesting that that's okay.
But that's because we don't have a separate.
I know, I, I get this. I'm only wanting to say is that there is some precedent that we do pay for students to go places.
We probably have to, don't we? Probably mandated by law to do so.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Never mind. Really, I, you, you told me to be quiet, Charlie, so while you were talking, so hold on just a second.
Okay, I stand corrected, sorry.
I think what, what is going on for me here is that it's that, what you're, what I've heard you saying is that you don't accept, we don't want to accept students on merit. We are, we just want to think of them as numbers, of numbers that have a certain cost attached to them. And I, I find that Machiavellian frankly, a bit. I think that we have to grapple with, I mean, I, I, if this, this allows us to actually grapple with you know, a student who wants to come here from another place, would you help me to understand how that would happen?
Let me run through it. Let me just run through it. So we create a tuition.
Yeah.
Then the criteria for getting in is that you need a letter from the principal of the sending school.
Yeah.
Just telling us what the special needs are, all the little things that they need. We need a letter from you, Liz, saying that we have space and that we fulfill those needs, we can fulfill those needs. And then, um, we need a letter from, whoops, I skipped. Sorry.
Because it's the chair of the sending.
Yeah, we need a letter from the, um, from the school board of the other township saying that they will pay tuition. I did say in this thing that if the entirety of the amount up, up above in the tuition, I said, if the entirety of the amount isn't satisfied, the board refuse, reserves the right to deny admission. But I'm not saying won't. Just saying.
We have the right to.
We might. You know.
So there's a letter from the principal.
Of the sending school.
That's right.
A letter from the board.
The board.
And a letter.
From the sending school.
Right.
And a letter from the principal here, Liz, and any non-resident student whose parent works at the Westminster Center School shall be automatically granted admission. So what does that mean?
So that was, this is an attempt to, this is a little, uh, like, an attempt to other schools have done this, to, to have, to, to keep, keep and attract good teachers and administrators, keep them in this school. So if you work here, your kid can go here.
Even if you live in Grafton.
Correct.
This was an optional, I mean, so it pays me as a parent to try to get a job here so that I could have my child come here and be taken care of.
Yeah, or you could live here.
That would be Machiavellian.
Or you could.
Well, no, but I mean, that's what I'm wanting to say is that it matters if, you know, so I get, I mean, I really I'm trying to get a sense of, um, equity around class.
Equity around class, I would say, is the fact that this is you're going to be draining schools if we just let kids come and say, nope, I don't want to be at that school anymore. I want to go to this school because I think this school is better and I think that's going to be better. That is, that, that is in, I think the idea of school choice is inequitable in nature. And so I think that saying we just need to be open to let anyone.
That, that wasn't what I was saying.
Yeah.
Truly, it wasn't at all. It's really trying to get a sense of what's maybe some criteria around, let's say that somebody lives, do you know, in, just across the border in Putney. But I'm just playing this out a little bit here. So.
Go ahead.
But the kind of facilities that are available, maybe it's on the, maybe it's another border. And that they don't have the facility to, to take care of, you know, their child or the children and that thing. And they want to come here. So I'm trying to figure out if there are some criteria here that are, I don't know if you call it merit-based, but that are, that have some sense of something other than not merit-based, I guess.
What would be an example, what would be an example of something they didn't have in a school that they did have here? What would be an example of that situation? Because legally you have to provide students with, with what they need.
Right.
And so that would be, they would have to take that up with the school system in which they live.
Sure.
So that they're providing those services.
Yeah, so I, I know that the case that we were talking about before, and I'm not going to mention, you know, anything. But it had a little bit to do with feeling that the parents were the ones that made the decision, not the, the child. So what I meant to say is that if that school system has what that child needs, then no. You know what I mean? In other words, they won't come here unless they have. So that's, that's what I'm wanting to say. If we assess that in, at one place, they do not have the kind of special needs or special education or something like that and we do, then that would be, would, I mean, would we say yes?
No. They have to legally provide that. So you can't say, we can't make a judgment and say, we don't think they're doing a good enough job. So you can come to us because we're better.
Yeah.
That's essentially what you're saying. We don't have that. I don't, I don't feel comfortable using that type of judgment.
To that child, you know, you have to push that other school system to have what you need.
Which is what I meant by, I don't want to get involved in that.
Yeah.
But somebody's going to say, well, my school really isn't as good for me and blah, blah, blah. I don't want to have that discussion with you because it's, it's intangible. It's, how do we know?
I'm not.
How can we come to a fair?
You could feel that same way about this school in a year.
What I had done for that second.
So, um, there is actually a student, I pick up in the bus who lives in Putney and I take him to the, the high school. So he must have stopped down some deal with the, the, with R S U to come to our high school. And I know that kids from this S U can go to a better high school. So they must have some cooperative agreement. I think there are a certain number of slots that people could go in either direction. So that's a fine system. So I can see that we might come up with something like that if the other towns were interested in cooperating with us. But I don't want to just if the us say, we're open to all comers.
Yeah.
We could add that in maybe, like this is open to 10 slots. We can add like some kind of a, I mean, I'm just.
One of the things that I think would be tricky to say this is up to 10 slots is like, let's say there's a single strand and that strand already has 22 kids in it. Adding another student can force like, to be like, a classroom to be unmanageable. And so that's not just the cost of another student coming in, that's also the cost of another teacher.
Teacher coming in.
Right.
So that would be, the principal would say, no, we don't have space.
We don't have room. Yeah.
If we would, that, that would be, they're fine, there's no space.
Okay. Okay.
I think one, so one situation where I can, I was trying to wrap my head around the... Because I think I do have a bias in that I don't, I don't like, I feel that having lots of choice in school slowly over time creates segregation of many types, you know, whether it's segregation of, you know, rich people into one area of school, athletic kids into one school, arts and like theater people into one school. It does that to, it has the potential to do that, yes. And not, not, not will it do that tomorrow. No, one student, no. I'm talking about over time. So I wanted, I was, I think part of my goal, maybe subconsciously, was to make it challenging, not impossible. But you wanna create a scenario where it's, it's not just, you know, oh, you know what? Oh, I had a bad day with that teacher, I wanna just like, go, I just gotta get out of here. Like, no, it can't be like that.
Yeah.
But, you know, maybe it is a little too strict, and we can back off a ditch, or, you know, tell me what, which parts of it could be changed.
No, you know, really, honestly, it was more of this question of, you know, merit or not merit. And, you know, I'm thinking about the students, not the parents.
So one other, and then I was trying to think through which scenarios I thought might, like, what is a scenario wherein I think it is good to have a kid move? And I was thinking actually about bullying, for instance. And I think I brought this up last time. So in a small school, for instance, where there's one second grade class, you know, there's only seven kids in there, in these small towns, that's the way that it is. Say there's bullying situation happening. They're never going to be with a different class, there's not, like, when I was a kid, I had four different classes in my grade. You were always mixed up. So in that, it's like seven, you know, seven kids are with those people from K through eight sometimes. So in that scenario, that's a problem that's intrinsic to the sending school. You know, they're like, there's a bullying situation going on, it's never going to change. We need to get out of this school particularly. This school doesn't have those particular kids, they may have bullying other ways, but... And that would be, you could do that here.
But I think that's covered by Title IX in HHB, isn't it? Like, if there's documented harassment, bullying, that kind of stuff, then that is something that they're, they have the legal authority to move a student.
And they can move it, and this allows for that as well.
Yeah, because the sending school would pay for that.
Yes, so I think, yeah. Okay, so that's just one little...
That would be covered under this, the way this is...
Yeah, you could easily do that in this.
There was a case recently, wasn't there, where somebody did get transferred from Grafton to here, wasn't there? Was that during that time? So that very recent.
From Westminster to Grafton.
Oh, yeah. Oh, interesting, that direction.
That happens, so, Rocky Hill to Westminster.
Yes.
So then the other piece was...
Excuse me, please finish, and then I have a couple.
Okay, so then the other piece was the appeal. We wrote this little appeal. I mean, the appeal portion, did you guys read the note from the lawyer? He was like, A, you don't really even need an appeal process, you're not required to have one. I only put one in because it was in that sample one.
In the example.
But he also said, you shouldn't really necessarily be appealing to the same board that you applied to in the first place, which makes good sense. But, I mean, I don't know, my thought was to just nix that whole appeal process, period. What do you guys think of that?
Everybody hasn't seen this statement from the attorney, I copied you on that.
Sure.
But that, we can come back to that. Okay, sorry.
In the original language, Margie started with, we had several references to the superintendent. And I said to her, as far as I know, the superintendent has nothing to do with it. But does the superintendent, could somebody from Grafton appeal to the superintendent and say, listen, they turned me down, I really wanna go to Westminster? And does the superintendent have any authority to override our board, or to persuade us, or whatever?
We're not a unified district, so that's, it's not applicable in the same sense.
So the superintendent has no, so the person couldn't appeal to the superintendent?
Well, if we were, sorry. If we were a unified district, I think it would be a moot point anyway, because they...
That's correct.
That's correct.
So I was correct, the superintendent has nothing to do with this.
Does she want to go to Westminster?
Yeah.
Right, so thank you, everybody. First of all, thank you both for the thoughtfulness about it. This is really a significant subject, and there are implications. I mean, so much precedent is established, and I think we've all kind of been wrestling with that sense of this question brought to us. I have a couple of just specific questions, and then I'll make a general comment. Under tuition, and number one, the last sentence, if the entirety of the amount isn't satisfied, the board reserves the right to deny admission. Is that a statement saying that the board could choose to waive tuition? Is that what you're meaning there?
Yes. I would like that stated. That...
I wanted the wiggle room in there, just, I mean, I know you don't want to, but I wanted to be able to...
The wiggle room, it's hard, 'cause what if, because then I think, if we do do that, and then for some, and don't do it for others, that could really put us in some jeopardy.
So what should we say instead? If the entirety of the amount is not satisfied, the board will refuse?
Yeah, will refuse.
At one point, we tossed out the idea of parents paying the difference. I thought that was not a good idea, because then rich folks would get in.
I said, my original was, we reserve the right to ask for the remainder from families, and we decided no of that.
Despite...
Please, let me just kind of finish. So if we left it, we could just delete that last sentence. And if you look at then the remainder of it, it is, just the tuition will come. That's just what this policy states. So as written, there are no exceptions, except for in D.
So we're not, so we're not, so if we just delete that last sentence, we're not explicitly saying, we will deny you, but it's, we would, if we don't get tuition.
I think that's what's implied. I don't know that it closes the door until looking at a special circumstance.
Okay.
I actually don't know. I think we might still possibly have the latitude to say this is an exception for these reasons. I don't, and she's uncomfortable, I get that. But I think, in principle, what this statement, what this policy is saying is that we'll only allow this if tuition's paid. That's what it's saying.
By the sending school.
Correct.
Yes, so not the, I think...
So take out the lessons, yeah, okay.
That's what it says. And it says if it's paid by the sending school.
Yes.
Correct.
Westminster will ask for the above stated, it says we will ask for the above stated non-resident tuition from the sending school, not we will require.
I think it should be required.
Well, at the very last, the very last page, we say, tuition for non-resident students shall be payable at any time prior to enrollment, it's to enroll the... It will be payable immediately. Does that cover it? Cover what you're saying, or?
Can we just put the word required in there, just to sure cover ourselves?
What the school board requires. Instead of will ask for, requires.
Require. Above stated, non-resident tuition from the sending school district.
Right, and then I think two is clear. Two, A, I, these are, these are steps that you're proposing. You know, many times, the principal from the sending school won't wanna do this. I mean, it might be the case...
Is that true?
Yeah, I wondered about that. I mean, maybe, I don't know.
I don't know.
You know, I don't know. But it's...
You're...
Sorry. Yeah. B is the chair of the sending agreeing to the full payment, so we have that on record, that's documented. And point C, the attorney did suggest, this is Sean Chewie, is the attorney that we use for the Westminster School Board. And as Margie said earlier, he did recommend deleting, essentially deleting the appeal process on the next page. But on this one, he suggested that we add, after the words, that the student presents, comma, without additional resources. I would add at the end of the sentence of section 2C, without additional resources. I'm concerned that you say correctly, that you will not deny based on special needs. It is written, it sounds like the principal could be to know if the school is not equipped. I think the reality is that the school district, you know, the district really needs to figure out. So it's the question about needing additional resources.
About additional resources.
Yeah.
Without additional resources. I guess, okay, I'm writing it down, but...
The school is equipped to meet any special needs without additional resources. He's just suggesting we have that clarified.
And when he, when he says resources, does he mean money? Like, without additional...
Money, or a specialist, an interventionist?
Or one-on-one classroom. Behavior.
And then, and then I would, looking ahead, I do suggest that we delete the appeal. But then, looking at D, let's talk about it a little bit. Margie's offered the rationale that we love to attract good people, and it would be an incentive. You know, many people talk about having an incentive to allow for one's child or children to be able to be at the same school.
And are we comfortable with that?
That's the question I'd like to pose to everybody.
I wonder if there should be a caveat in there about space available. So if somebody wanted to bring their child, then having to split fifth grade classes to classes and hire a new teacher, then maybe we don't want to do that.
Yeah. So we just say, after Westminster School Board, comma, subject to space available?
Subject to space available.
I agree strongly with you. We are in a real teacher crisis, shortage crisis right now. I think teachers get almost no perks.
Yeah, this could be one.
This could be one perk, in order to keep good teachers here, I think.
This is, any parent could be custodian, this could be...
Yeah.
Yep.
And everything, and when I say teacher shortage, I guess I should say, school personnel shortages.
So if, okay, so when it says works at the Westminster Center School, at means all of those people that you described.
Correct.
Maybe, do you want me to put in something like, this includes faculty and staff? And is there a different way to write that?
Ooh, and not only do you need to do that, but now suddenly worrying about parent. It could be guardian, it could be...
Yes, I wondered that, yeah. Any number of, who's parent?
Or guardian, slash guardian?
Okay.
You're concerned about, Charlie's raising concern about all staff. I still think it, personally, I think so.
Yeah.
Did you see the email from Andy about the total side note that somebody's putting? They have a facility. Anyway, okay.
So, so are there, I'm gonna make a proposal after we finish discussion, but are there any other changes people would suggest?
I think the changes were made.
May I say, it's a harder line than Westminster has previously had. We have been, on a case-by-case basis, we have allowed children to come here, and we have not always required tuition from a sending school. I have to really review my notes. One situation that I can remember, maybe five years ago, did have to do with a student who was experiencing bullying, and that family wanted to move the child to Putney Central School. And that occurred, and I don't remember whether we paid tuition or not. I'd like to check the records on that. And I don't, and we did not get into the kind of legal discussion that you raised earlier. Federal law never came into the discussion, it may not have been elevated.
Help me with that. Because there is, there, the word bully is thrown around a lot, but there's a, there's a legal definition to bullying and harassment. And so I think that would be, I think it's, I think we would need to go, I would, I feel strongly that it would need to have been a documented, investigated situation in order for us to move forward with that. Because many parents and students say they're being bullied when that is not the case.
Yeah. So, yeah, I believe it did not level, rise to that level. I think it was family discomfort, child discomfort, and that my understanding is that the move was quite successful. So, and it didn't rise to that, as I'm saying. I'd like to check the record on that. I'd like to invite the public, this is, this is a public meeting, this is warned as a topic for this meeting. I'd like to invite the public to send us any comments. This is a break in a complicated issue, and I'd love to hear from people. And so I would suggest that this, we would not take any action on this tonight, but we invite comment, and that this would be again on our next regular meeting, which is December 15. I think it's the meeting, December, yes, absolutely.
I just have one additional question. So we do, I think we do have students right now who are in Westminster, who are non-residents in Westminster. So are they, would we consider them grandfathered into the system? And that this is for, you know, active moving forward.
Should I, should I add that?
Should that be, yeah.
Pardon me?
Does it need to be added, is what you're asking?
Like, that current students are grandfathered in?
We can even just put that in the minutes of when we take action on this.
Okay.
I think there are, I'm beginning to understand that there are some circumstances where we do have students here, and I think legal action was involved to have them moved in. I'm just thinking about students and how it's...
Do we have any idea if tuition follows them?
I believe that tuition is going to follow them, is what I've just been told. So are you recommending that the changes that we talked about be made into another document or waiting for public response? I think both, you know, when we, when we post items for the next meeting, this is a document that could be there for the public to read, yes. And again... So those little, those changes that we made could be, because it...
As amended.
As amended. I think we can take that action, that we could entertain a motion to post this for discussion at our upcoming meeting, reflecting the changes that we recommended tonight. Okay. So I would entertain that motion.
Seconded.
Okay. Got it? So, so we'll discuss it at the next meeting, having incorporated the changes here, and we invite the public to...
Thank you for putting that work into it.
Yes.
Cool, I guess I did have one other question. This, the top admission of non-resident students from non-operating districts, does that make sense? It's non-operating.
It's a legal term in the state, I don't remember what it means.
Should I just keep it, or should we just say?
That was in the sample. Or from outside districts?
Which, where is it?
It's buried at the label.
Tagged.
Admission of non-resident students from non-operating.
I would delete that, admission of non-resident students.
Just period.
To Westminster Center School.
To Westminster Center School.
To, what we actually call it technically, is to Westminster Community Schools.
Okay, okay, I should probably change that.
And that's only because we used to have the West West building, and I still want it water.
I kept totally confused by central and center. Go to the center school.
Bell's Wells, over. There's, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, really, Bell's Wells.
Thank you so much. But again, outstanding, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, the last, also complicated proposal, Margie's been doing some research on, and that's the solar.
Yeah, so at the last SU meeting, there was a proposal from a fellow who is doing a large-scale solar farm, whatever they're called, and then asking the SU if we wanted to join a net metering agreement. The contract, I've read through it, but basically, it's a guaranteed 10% savings on your, every dollar that they put into the grid, we would pay 90 cents for. It's a 10% savings. I guess I just wanted to bring it up, because the SU put it to the finance committee...
And it's not going to consider it until after budget season.
Okay, and they won't consider it till after budget season. But I was wondering and thinking that if the SU decides not to do it as a larger group, would Westminster Center consider doing it? And, or would we wanna consider doing that? To join in that later.
But I'll need your... I can't remember what's in there.
Is there a front cost? Are we asking, are we putting money into this thing? Is there a cost at all?
No.
That's strange.
It's, you're joining this group, you're agreeing to pay, I can send everyone the contract that he sent. You're agreeing to pay, you're signing up for 20 years, it's a long term. You're signing up for 20 years of a certain amount, of purchasing a certain amount of... of power, which is, I forget the percentage you told me, but I've asked a bunch of questions, just to clarify, but it's, I forget how much, what percentage of the use that we use now.
What would be the downside of it? What would be the reason not to do it?
This is a really good question. I emailed Jack Prior about that because, oh, however you say, from Bear?
Yeah.
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 Anyway, because he was saying at the meeting that he saw some downs, or that he said the devil was in the details, but he has not emailed me back with those specific devils. Yeah. Yeah. I'm, I'm, but I'm very curious, what do you think? Um, it seemed like Chris Kibbe also had some concerns, but I haven't heard anything about that.
So what is, what is the energy source in this building? Is it all electricity? Or is there a heating system?
Well, you have a wood chip burn.
A wood chip burn.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. But nothing with, yes.
Yes, awesome, I know.
People who have the, so it's not, you know, like oil or gas.
No, we boil, we also have an oil tank.
Okay. Yeah. So the reason I'm mentioning this is at the meeting, if you all remember, while I was sitting next to a woman who was talking about, you know, what happens in 50 years?
Probably been like 30 years.
You know, what happens to, for our children, basically? When these solar panels become obsolete? And are there things in, I looked it up, I actually did look at it. So there are certain panels that are more or less, well, there's stuff in, that's one way to say, to bury them or wherever you put them, they still have, you know, a chemical that is not good for us, right? So I was interested in, there's a much, what shall I say? A much thinner, but very effective solar panel that is less that way. So it occurred to me to ask these folks, because I thought it was actually a good question. I did. And so, because we, I'm, I'm, you know, at that meeting, you know, people had different, you know, is it, anyway, are we saving money? And yes, it was saving money. The question was really, you know, over time, how bad is it to bury all of these things? You know what I mean?
Is it worse than burning them? What do you do with the solar panels after 30 years, is what she was?
Yeah, that's right. So what happens to them? And I looked, I looked it up about what was in those solar panels. And, you know, it's not all good when you have to get rid of them. You know what I mean? I'm with you. I had the same conversation with the woman next to me because it was about other sources, right? But anyway, I just wanted to mention that, because I thought it was an interesting question. And, you know, how many we do, or, you know, the size of what we might do, or, it's just a-
Well, we're not doing any. This was like the, so this is, this was-
No, it was an offer. I, what I wanted to say was an offer that might have, that interested, is interesting to people.
Well, I, I was thinking, like, here's, you know, we have this surplus money, here's this other group that's building the solar array. I mean, I think we do need to start thinking about alternative sources of energy, and if we're not going to put in our own array here, this is the next best thing.
Yeah.
You join a collective. So do we want to consider that? We can have him come, we can have the guy who's putting this together come to our next meeting and present it to us.
Would, would we be paying for part of the cost of the, of in building it?
No, there's no, there's no part of the cost. All yours, literally all you're doing is you're agreeing to be their customer and purchase the energy that they are producing.
And their cost is guaranteed to be lower than the kilowatt hour cost of GMP, three minute.
They're guaranteeing a 10% discount.
Yeah, I would love to.
Which is about $3,000.
Well, it's having, yeah.
Looked it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we said, because our electricity energy bill this year is $30,000, $35,000, $38,000. So we're talking about $3,000 to $4,000 a year savings.
Yeah.
Not a lot. But a lot.
Well, I mean, I, I thought about, like, what is the downside? I was thinking the downside would be you're locked into a 20-year agreement if something better does come along. That is the downside.
Like, there's this, there's this, like, technology that they're just-
That's the ambition, I can-
There's a much more efficient windmill technology that they're coming out with, which could be a perfect option for Westminster, given that the wind never stops blowing. And so of that, you know, and we know that with the, what is it called? The Inflation Reduction Act, there's a huge incentives for boosting up our green energy production. So in the next couple of years, it could be, there could be better options. It's probably locked into a 20-year.
I pushed him on the 20-year. I, I asked if that was negotiable, and he said no. I actually, when I emailed him, I pushed him on the 10% too.
Yeah.
I said I, we're the only customers, we're great customers, we would pay on time every time, you should give us better than 10%. And he, they wouldn't budge on that either. Just so you know, I'm trying.
You know, I should walk away. I'm mad at him.
Yeah. Wait, 13%?
Speak to my manager, please.
I mean, you know, it might be interesting at some time, maybe at the next meeting, but to have the wind person, a similar person, to talk to us about, you know, what's moving ahead and what's, you know what I mean? To ask those kinds of questions.
I do think short of, short of, short of building our own, we probably shouldn't forget some of these agreements, right?
I also asked him at that meeting whether or not they're collaborating, because, you know, Green Mountain Power's been doing stuff, a lot of stuff. Whether the, these companies are collaborating with one another to try to improve things. And he said he was just going to a conference of other people doing similar stuff. So it was, you know, that's my whole thing about, anyway.
Well, I, so I'm, I am sitting here intrigued by the possibilities of board looking at options. I'm thinking about Kent Goodell, our school nurse's husband, and the fact that they produce all the energy that they need at the Goodell Farm with using the, that they, that thing from the animals, from, yeah, that's incredible. I'd like to hear a little bit about that. Now, how would we get that? We'd have to get it from the farm, right? You know? But what about with all of the surplus that we have? What about a solar array? Why, we have one land here. Why, and the children can be involved in that, about all the different educational aspects of that. Wind is potentially another option. So what if we get a little, do a little more, do a little more research? And again, back to the significant surplus monies, we could make this one-time investment and have them mature for a long time.
I, I do think Green Mountain Power does source a lot of their electricity from renewable options, which is something to look at.
You know, I, I, I put so we're on my bar two years ago now, and we're doing GMP.
And my neighbor the same. He gives back to the, he gives back to, you know.
Right. So I, so I, so I love this, and I think, I think we have choices. It's gonna be fun, too.
I think we'll make my school 10% if we put our own up.
The difference between, when I looked at the difference between the two, so if you're guaranteeing 10% less, and they guarantee 10% less, so the costs rise, you know, GMP is still controlling how much they're charging. We just get 10% less than whatever the going rate is. If you put up your own array, you're almost locking in, how much? Because you're, you're putting in kilowatt hours, you're not putting in dollars. You're putting in kilowatt hours that then you use kilowatt hours. You see what I'm saying? So it's like you're, you're locking in your value back the day you put them up and start running them. Versus a system that's like shifting, versus a system that there, you're getting 10% back. You're getting a 10% discount, no matter what the cost is, you're getting 10% off.
If you produce your own, you get 100% discount.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So if the proposal's up, then 100% is even greater.
Right. Right, that's what I'm saying. You're, you're-
The thing is true is that there's a cost of putting it in. It's a big cost. I don't know, but the rest of it, you have solar.
It says that we have some cash.
I, I don't, because I couldn't work. So, but I keep asking my neighbors, you have all these, and you have that. Maybe I could be writing them in.
Doesn't mean we have cash, but there's probably grants to support this thing as well.
Back to what's going on with the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think a little more research. I'd suggest that we do this research between now and the end of the year, quite honestly, because we want to be ready if we have a proposal to the taxpayers for use of some of these monies.
Yeah. So does anybody want to hear from this guy, or no?
What?
Okay. You don't want to hear from the guy.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to, now, I really, I would suggest, Margie, you can share with the board all of those emails, just asking people not to comment. It's only for their information, therefore, everybody can read the Q and A.
And you can look at the contracts.
I beg your pardon?
And look at the contracts.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Just not to get into email dialogue, but you may share all of the information.
I was just thinking about Jean's, you know, comment about wind, if she had some information about the wind thing that you were talking about.
Yeah, we, we actually have written to this company that had this new technology for our own house, but I could write to them to see, yeah, what the timeline is, yeah, moving forward. They have like some that they've installed up in Burlington.
And I think the big, the big additional framing for all of this in our own minds is that what's good for this school district for the long term? And is this the time with this surplus money to invest these possibilities as part of what was-
I'm thinking about, you know, the students would be reading about it. I mean, in other words, if we're starting to do this, it would be kind of interesting if it was something that they wanted to research too, about things.
And also be thinking about any other enhancements here that would be good for the community, for the children coming years from now, that we might have the opportunity to help serve now.
Yeah.
Yes, Margie?
There was Sarah, Kat was interested in thinking about things for the budget, for budgetary surplus, and wanted to create something of a proposal. And I met with her, but I don't know how to do something like that.
Oh, you're talking Sarah Carlisle? I was trying to figure out.
Yes. She's just a, she's just a Westminster resident.
Right.
She has a bunch of ideas, and how do, when does one present those, or can she come and present?
Of course. Anytime, you know, we just have to figure out the time and, yeah. Okay. All right, encourage her, please.
Well, it has to be next week, isn't it? Or December.
Right, soon, soon, yeah.
Okay.
And would she need to write by a certain time so that she could be put on the agenda, or would she need her public comment?
To be on the agenda is better. To have us the advance, especially if she has any, once, if, if it's in public comment, then we don't get to dialogue, and we certainly can't take action. If she wants to be on the agenda, it has to be in advance.
So just, is there an advance, is there a time in which she needs it, like, a week prior, or does it?
Okay.
Typically, okay, I'll tell her. So that's the, those are all the major topics for the agenda. Next is director's comments. We'll address date and time on the next meeting. Are you ready for director's comments?
Oh, thank you for having me, meeting.
Margie, any comments?
Nope. Really, I, I just felt that the, the work that you both put into this was great. And I loved hearing more about what's going on from a learning point of view, and I'd love to have a long conversation streak. Anyway, and, you know, the conversations about the different kinds of options for energy.
I have one more thing. I'm, I was wondering whether, I'm glad you suggested that we put this aside, that policy aside, and see if it gets comment. I was wondering at the end of the day whether this is something we should put to the voters of the town? Whether they want to charge tuition or not, or whether they want to make faith, you know, to not charge it. It might be too, I don't know, too complex or too, I don't know. I don't know if it's a thing that we should take into account, because we've kind of, I'm, I'm embarrassed that I came up with this out of mind, making it very hard for people to come.
Well, I'm the one who came up with it, Charlie.
I don't know what it is. Because the document that you shared with us was very much encouraging districts to do this, to, we both agree that the tone of that document, I think it was you shared it, but-
It's a brush in.
Yeah, yeah, district should really do this. Well, that's great, except that I just thought of all the downsides. Anyway, so I don't know if you wanted, if it, if we'd ever get a satisfactory outcome from putting into voters or not.
I think it's too many cooks in the kitchen. Too many cooks in the kitchen.
Maybe.
They can comment publicly.
Maybe we're paid to make job choices, yeah.